Representative Joseph Flores. Representative Marissa Flores.
Present.
Senator Magovnia.
Present.
Representative Manglonia.
Present.
Representative Omar.
Present.
Representative Robbs.
Present.
Chairman Sablon.
Yes, to you.
Representative Villagomez.
Hello.
Representative Yankamay.
Yangiyi.
Representative Yumo. Representative Fata. Representative Joseph Flores. Representative Yumo. Mr. Chairman, we have eighteen members present and three members absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With eighteen members present, we duly establish a quorum. Please take note that Representative Ralph Yumo and Representative Joseph Flores is here by excuse in today's order of business, and that Representative Roy Ada will be joining us momentarily. Thank you, Members. Moving along in our order of business, we are now on Item B, reading an approval of the journal. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have one snail journal, number twenty-three oh six, first day, third special session dated July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and at this time I recognize the floor leader for the proper motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Members. I now offer a motion to adopt Snail Journal twenty-three oh six, first day, third special session dated July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. So moved.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader for the adoption of journals, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, motion adopted. Thank you, Members. Moving along, we are now on Item C, public comments, and at this time, the podium is open for whoever in the public that are here in the gallery and the lobby to provide oral testimony. The podium is open. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, a member of this esteemed body. My name is Ramon RB Komatsu, the mayor for the municipality of Saipem. Mr. Chairman, a member of this team body, I'm here today to support the House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-three and House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-four. Mr. Chairman, a member of this body, after conducting a thorough review of the above bill, I want to commend the initiative and to address the funding needs for the government agencies as well as the organization that play a vital role in our community. It is heartening for the Saipem and Northern Island Legislative Delegation taking this step to prioritize, allocate resources where they most need it, especially during the time of economic challenge. Mr. Chairman, as a mayor for this municipality, the mayor always seek for funding. And I would say it's always not enough, and it will never be enough. Every day, I receive a lot of requests from our community. As one mayor for the entire island, population of Yifan Tech fifty thousand here in our island, it's an everyday challenge for me, but we're just doing our very best to serve the community accordingly. There's a lot of obstacles, Mr. Chairman and member of this body, I'm facing now. I'm trying, I'm working so hard to establish a good partnership with all the regulatory agency here in Northern Ireland. Just for the record, that I established a good partnership with the Dillinar, which encompass of the section of the Fish and Wildlife issues, establish a good working relationship with the BCQ permits on these areas that requires, you know, again, permit. Mr. Chairman, a member of this body, I think we need to start reviewing all the regulations. You know, probably those regulations that have been established, you know, we're fortunate enough to have all those resources. But I think it's time now to really magnify glass the regulation that's really hindering us in to move for better improvement in our community. You know, I stand firmly that all regulation, as long that it's not written in stone, it's amendable. So I think we need to carefully review it and look carefully what needs to be amended in order for all of us to go forward in this community. Again, Mr. Chairman, I humbly ask that please appropriate this funding for the mayor, and I also support other agencies, nonprofit organizations, you know, that seeking for this funding, and I support their request, and we look forward to continue. And also on the nonprofit, you know, also let's work and see how we can think outside the box to generate funding, because all of us seeing that the financial in the government is not there. We're all struggling, and let's be creative and think outside the box how we can generate. With this, Mr. Chairman, I humbly ask that approve the House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-three and House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-four. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Mayor of Saipem, RB Komatsu. The podium is still open. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Tiro Mejafade, Chairman. I am Mark Rebalaman, Special Assistant for the Northern Island Mayor's Office, Honorable Valentino and Tascan Junior. He conveys his regards and apologies for his absence, so I'm here to read his message. Comments on House Bill Local Bill twenty-three twenty-three to reappropriate funds under Saipem Local Law twenty-two dash two and for other purposes. The language within House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-three references Saipem Local Bill twenty-two dash eight pursuant to Public Law twenty-ten is straightforward in conveying the reappropriation of one million dollars for the Northern Marianas College project in building a new state-of-the-art campus for the populace. I am pleased to see the legislature taking proactive steps to ensure our post-secondary institution is in step with the twenty-first century. It is important to note that in striving to achieve this vision for our community, we must also consider the rise in tuition costs associated with such upgrades for future legislations. Our investment in our education is paramount to our ability to stay competitive with the rest of the world. The area of the bill that concerns us is the appropriation section. The exclusion of Northern Islands in the twenty-three dash twenty-three as a recipient of any appropriations. We are not assigning any responsibility to anyone for the exclusion, rather highlighting to ensure that both parties, Snout and Nemo, do a better job in communicating its needs and expectations. The office of the Northern Islands has benefited from this appropriation, and specifically Islands up north in itself is in a unique situation, and would like to continue with our partnership in striving to achieve the resettlement and development of these islands. We are in support of this bill as it stands. We thank you for the opportunity to present our comments and hope that the insight we have offered proves useful in development of these types of legislation for the future. Regarding House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-four, we agree to the intent of this legislation, and we may take this time to express our appreciation and continued support from this honorable body. It is my hope that within this House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-four, consideration can be given to add additional funds to support my office's endeavor. Sisus Maasi, Mayor Olomai, Honorable Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rebalaman. The podium is still open. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hafaday Zantiro, Chairman Sablon, and the honorable members of the Saipem and Northern Islands Legislative Delegation. I hope you're all staying dry. For the record, my name is Kailani Babauta Demapon, Chairwoman of the Board of Directors for the Saipem Higher Education Financial Assistance Program. On behalf of my fellow Board of Directors, Raymond Munya, Henry Kyle Hofschneider, Eloine Bazza, and Florines Calvo, and our chef administrator, Marissa Rasa, I stand here today to testify in full support for House Bill twenty-three dash twenty-four, which will appropriate one point five million to Shefa from the revenues collected pursuant to Saipem Local Law eleven dash two. As you know, Shefa continues to play a critical role within our Commonwealth, distributing scholarships and assistance to students as they pursue higher education at our local community college and beyond in hopes of them returning home and serving our community. Shefa has consistently proven itself as a powerful tool in breaking down barriers to higher education for deserving students who might otherwise struggle to afford the cost of tuition, books, and other educational expenses, and by providing financial assistance to talented and motivated individuals. The program not only opens doors for individual success, but also contributes to the overall progress and prosperity of our Commonwealth. Since two thousand and four, Shefa has awarded over fifty-one hundred recipients. Eighty-five percent of recipients have pursued undergraduate degrees, and fifteen percent have pursued graduate degrees and/or certificate programs with over forty million dollars dispersed. About sixty-six percent of recipients attend a community college, twenty-one percent a university, three percent attend a vocational trade school, and nine percent resort to online institutions. Within the last month, we have dispersed over twenty-two hundred awards, processed about twenty-two hundred, twenty or two hundred awards, and are prepared to release additional awards through the deadline of September thirty, twenty-twenty-three. And as a result, we have created a well-educated workforce, which is crucial for a thriving economy, and our recipients of the Shefa program go on to contribute to our Commonwealth, Commonwealth economy by taking on roles in various fields from science and technology to healthcare and the arts, and by investing in their education. We are laying the foundation for a more competitive and innovative workforce. And today, we have made progress with compliance from about having twenty point six million in receivables to twelve million in receivables, which means our students are coming back home. As a board, we have had to make difficult decisions as a result of our natural disasters, the COVID-nineteen pandemic and economic financial crisis, and we are just committed to making every choice we make align with our mission and leads to the betterment of the students that we serve. And so in sharing our CNMI's ongoing commitment to fiscal responsibility and financial stewardship, our board has done its best to reduce costs without compromising the main mission of our program, which is to provide financial assistance to our students. For example, we have temporarily suspended incentives and reduced the award amount for advanced degree seekers in order to sustain our grant-in-aid award. We have also waived the service requirement for our active military personnel. And so these decisions have allowed us to, have allowed the board and the administrator, Marissa Rasa, to embrace transparency, because transparency builds trust, and trust builds a strong foundation for our scholarship program. So we empathize with this honorable body in how decisions are being made on a daily basis. And so for these reasons, I strongly urge this August body to support this bill, and I look forward to working together to support our students. And so by supporting Shefa, you are directly contributing to the advancement of education and economic growth as a whole. And so thank you, Sisus Maasi Zangiliso, for your leadership, for everything that you do, and for the consideration of my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Demapon, the podium is open.
Hafaday Zantiro, my name is Ahmed Fitio, and I'm the president for CLI Board of Directors. I came here before you to support the House bill that would allocate funds to CLI so that we can continue with our work to help individuals with disabilities. Ah, sorry, it's been a long time. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our staff, and our consumers, we'd like to thank you for your support in allocating these funds. There's a lot of individuals in our community that need our assistance, and with this funding, CLI can continue to help these individuals. So once again, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed Fitio. The podium is still open. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Judy Torres. I'm with the Marianas Visitors Authority. Hafaday, Tirowami, and good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members, for this opportunity to testify today on House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-three. I'm here on behalf of our MVA Managing Director, Christopher Concepcion, who is currently in Korea for a promotional show. We would like to thank the delegation for your quick response to the MVA's request earlier this month to partner on filling a short-term yet important need for the continuous smooth recovery of our tourism economy. In short, the MVA fully supports this bill, which will allow our current bus shuttle from hotel to downtown Garapan to continue uninterrupted in September. As a bit of background, the MVA started this shuttle service as a convenience and one of the several incentives to lure the Japan market when direct flight restarted in September of last year. While the shuttle has been available to visitors from all our markets, these incentives are being phased out, and this shuttle funding will be depleted this month. The good news is Koda is planning on starting a public transit route which mirrors our current shuttle schedule. That service will start on October first. The funding under this bill, fifteen thousand dollars, will allow us to provide uninterrupted shuttle service in September until Koda starts their route. With, without the intervention of this bill and the current funding source depleted, we will have a gap in service which will make it burdensome and costly for our visitors to transit along our main thoroughfare, thoroughfare, our main road of Beach Road. Also, the funding provided by this bill is also timely, because the MVA is funding the Marianas Experience at Te Galleria for the next couple of months. And this is a unique opportunity for our tourists, our visitors, to see, hear, and touch our Chamorro and Carolinian culture. We want as many visitors as we can get to have this experience. Again, we thank you for making tourism your business by proposing this legislation, which the MVA supports one hundred percent. Sisus Maasi Zan Olomai.
Thank you, Ms. Judy Torres. The podium is still open?
Hafaday, Chairman Sablon, and members of the Snout. My name is Jose Simofnas, Director of the Division of Customs and Biosecurity. Here with, I'm here with some of my coworkers, especially the maritime unit. We are here to express our strong support for House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-three, which proposes allocating twenty thousand, the customs and biosecurity for fuel for maritime boats responsible for patrolling, patrolling our waters. Maritime Security Unit is just established just this year because of the urgency that we see or based on information about movements of boats, yachts out there in our waters. By allocating, allocating funds for fuel for our maritime boats, we are equipping our customs and biosecurity personnel with the necessary resources to effectively patrol and monitor our waters. The allocation of twenty thousand of fuel not only strengthens our border control efforts, but also underscores our commitment to prioritizing the safety and well-being of our citizens. So Chairman and Members of Snail, I urge you and your honorable colleagues to support House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-three, which again purports to provide funds for fuel to support our maritime boats. This bill is significant to our efforts to protect our borders against threats to our people. And just, you know, in, in over two decades or more, almost three, my service with the Division of Customs, aside from the regular budget hearing, I have never asked for money here with Snail. This is my first time, so I hope you know, I hope you know that I'm actually desperate to get our boats out and start patrolling our waters. I just came back from, it's called the Joint Heads of Pacific Security, JHOPs, and one of the discussion is that the movement is drugs is now carried by, you know, vessels, yachts, now this passing, and out here is a gateway, vessels that are passing our waters, and we are responsible also to be out there. And no twenty thousand is not enough, but something to start us off. But if you're happy to double that, I'm happy to take it too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Jose Simofnas. Podium is still open. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hafaday, everybody. My name is Lauren Cabrera, and I'm the founder and executive director of Saipem Humane Society. Thank you for your consideration of providing funding to our nonprofit organization. As a nurse practitioner, I have made a full career switch, and I'm currently pursuing two master's degrees on full scholarships to expand my skills in veterinary and shelter medicine. This is a huge gap in our community, and it's very difficult to find a full-time veterinarian. Prior to moving back to Saipem, where my husband is from, I also co-founded a Guam-based organization called Booney Flight Project, and I now serve as the Board President of Guam Animals in Need, so you can see my commitment to animal welfare. Our five oh one C three nonprofit organization was established in February of twenty-twenty-three with a mission of improving animal welfare in the CNMI in two important ways. First, by increasing access to veterinary services for concerned pet owners in the community. And second, by working in collaboration with the Saipem Mayor's Dog Control Program to control dog and cat overpopulation by increasing access to sterilization, adoption, and providing euthanasia of sickly, suffering, and aggressive stray animals roaming our streets. Although there is no practicing veterinarian living in the CNMI, our team has worked hard to create an excellent network of veterinarians who live off island and provide us with services through remote supervision and periodic visits. Recruiting a full-time veterinarian to live here, although a great dream, is nearly impossible due to their high student debt and the low salaries that they would likely make here. However, we are very confident that our team can meet the needs of community pet owners in providing access to high-quality veterinary care on a regular basis for the indefinite future. On a typical clinic day, with or without a veterinarian, we're seeing twenty to forty patients per day out of the Saipem Mayor's Dog Shelter. We're very grateful to the staff there for allowing us to use their space free of rent, and we have trained their staff to assist us as vet techs. We price our services very low, just making enough to hire two staff and also to continue buying supplies so we don't run out. However, given the amount of calls and patients that are in need of care, we desperately need to expand our staffing. For those who are not animal lovers, don't worry, dog population management is still important. Dog overpopulation has been identified as a critical pollutant of coastal waters on Saipem, negatively impacting coral reef health and our own health, you know, the red flag alerts. Additionally, they contribute to the spread of leptospirosis, intestinal parasites, external parasites like scabies, you know, mange, ticks, fleas, and they, they also bite people, so they're negatively impacting both public health for humans and also agriculture and livestock health. Finally, feral dog overpopulation has been identified as having a significant impact on tourism. On a study done in Puerto Rico, there were millions of dollars in lost tourist revenue noticed over two years because tourists were deciding not to return to Puerto Rico because the dogs were just appalling to them. because the dogs were just appalling to them. Although this study has not been conducted locally, it can be inferred that perhaps we may have similar results. Historically, dog population management in the CNMI has been focused on an immediate fix, which is catch and kill. However, research has been pointed that this is an ineffective way of managing dog overpopulations. As you remove dogs from the population, it creates a vacuum so other dogs can move in, take up those resources, and reproduce. A dog's gestation period is just 60 days, so it doesn't take too long for them to fill an area once the dogs have been removed. By following data-proven methods of dog population management in collaboration with our wonderful partners at the Mayor's Office and Dog Control Program, I'm confident that we can make a sustainable, lasting impact on the dog population here, also beautifying our island and strengthening both the public health and economical health of our island as it recovers from the pandemic. These funds will allow us to continue our current operations while expanding capacity to help more caring pet owners in need, while also curbing dog populations on islands. With only two paid staff and over 21,000 dogs on Saipan, you can imagine we're spread very, very thin. We hope you will consider funding our organization and trust our commitment and expertise to making the CNMI a better place for animals with realistic, practical, and science-based approaches to dog population management and veterinary services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lauren Cabrera. Podium is still open? Or anyone here in the gallery wishes to make oral testimony? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman John Paul Sablon and members of the 23rd Saipan and Northern Island Legislative Delegation. My name is Carmen Cabrera Pangilinan, the Secretary for the 17th CNMI and Northern Island Municipal Council. I'm here on behalf of the Chairwoman, Marian de Longuero de la Duda, due to an emergency. The leadership of the 17th and Northern Islands Municipal Council supports the intent and purpose in the House Local Bill 23-23 and House Local Bill 23-24, and urge action for the passage of the two proposed funding measures. At the same time, we request it for your consideration in cost-sharing with OIA, CIP, and the FEMA's PAO, the Public Assistance Office, the project management on ITB23.gov/42300074, project site in Chalancanoa, at $95,000 on August 21, 2023. We learned only this week the requested amount falls short of the actual project management costs with the initial requested amount at $95,000. I will ask Mr. Bill Torres to provide the background detail on the subject if there is any question or need for clarification on this issue. For now, do know that the 17 Council Leadership shares this platform with you in our collective desire to recapture the great moments in our history in unity that enabled the municipality of Saipan achieve success and progress as a unified municipality we have come to appreciate under then the Mayor Vicente D. Kilili Sablon and mayors before who preceded him. As I leave the podium, do know that the 17 Council Leadership shall be grateful for the collective wisdom, deeds, and actions of leaders before us on behalf of our progressive municipality here in Saipan, CNMI. Thank you.
Thank you, Consulwoman Carmen Pangilinan. Podium is still open? Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman Sablon and members of the committee. My name is Judith Pangilinan, Acting Executive Director for Curaydot. Both Executive Director Lori Ogomoro and Deputy Director Elaine de la Cruz are currently off island. With me is Ms. Lisa Adat, Curaydot's Author Coordinator, Mr. Luis Igual, Community Operations Manager, and Ms. Ariane Maturum, Family Case Manager. We are here in support of House Local Bill 23-23. Curaydot continue to need assistance to fund our family services program, which does not have a stable funding source. It relies on donations from the community and funding appropriations, opportunities such as the SNIO and/or the EFS, which is the Emergency Food and Shelter Grant Awards, for direct services. We need to continue to support the family services program staff and services provided. Here is an overview of the services provided this calendar year. One, like other government agencies and NGOs, the awarded ARPA funding to Curaydot is no longer available. Second, due to continued crisis, economic crisis, and the stresses of the community requests for Curaydot services have exponentially increases. Sorry, kind of shaking now. A total number of 206 rental assistance requests so far for the calendar year 2023. In addition, Curaydot has given out 160 food vouchers, with an additional 25 on the waitlist. These 25 families are currently experiencing reduced hours, not eligible for a nap, and still struggling to make ends meet. Also, we have provided approximately 550 food packages, 500 T-FAD packages, and given out 354 food certificates under the Family Services Program. Third, we anticipate requests for services to continue as our community and families are still facing economic uncertainty. Fourth, our family services program staff work individually with each family as each situation is different and dedicate their time to these families to provide them the help requested. The money earmarked for Curaydot under this local law will be used to provide house rental assistance and partial payment of staff salaries and benefits that oversees the program. This program has done an amazing work this year, and we hope this brief oversee provides the snapshot that SNIO needs to understand Curaydot's dire assistance for funding. Thank you, Sizus Maasi, Zen Olomai.
Thank you, Mrs. Pangilinan. The podium is still open?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative Delegation. My name is Felisadat Taman Ogomoro. I'm here today to deliver the remarks prepared by, for SNIO, by our Acting President Sharina Clark, who is currently off island. Dear Chairman Sablon and members, on behalf of the CNMI Women's Association, CWA, I am writing to respectfully seek the SNIO committee's support in allocating $50,000 to our association. If approved, this funding will allow us to continue our women entrepreneurs project, of which funding under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, was discontinued. CWA is a federal 501(c)(3) and CNMI tax-exempt nonprofit organization whose mission is to empower women to succeed in their roles as leaders in communities throughout the Commonwealth. Since it was incorporated April 13, 2011, the association has partnered with public and private organizations to deliver vital social services to our communities, which include education and training opportunities, mentorship, advocacy, outreach, and referrals. Since 2011, the association has accomplished the following: sponsorship of annual women's summit, which brings together members of our community to discuss issues and find solutions to difficulties affecting our women and their families in collaboration with its partners in the public and private sectors. Has assisted women who did not complete their high school education with enrolling in alternative education programs and applying for jobs. Has sponsored job readiness training to include work ethics, customer service, and coping skills in the workplace. Has provided space for community partners to conduct training opportunities focused on mental health and other topics. With the CNMI Small Business Development Center Network, CWA has sponsored training programs for women entrepreneurs consisting of the following components: how to start a business, how to write a business plan, how to prepare a financial plan, financial plan, and how to write a marketing plan. Has sponsored the Women Entrepreneurs Project web designed to assist our women entrepreneurs who aspire to own their own business with opportunities to network with established female business owners while also availing of the above-mentioned training programs sponsored by SBDCN, etc. CWA has also participated in various community events as well as whole-market-style events at our office in Capitol Hill to assist already-established businesses with promoting and selling their products in the community. Mr. Chairman and members, for CWA to continue its mission of helping our women succeed in the leadership roles they play in our homes and the communities they are part of, we respectfully ask that you please support the allocation of $50,000 to support our association. Gilisso, Zen Sizus Maasi, sign, Sharina Clark.
Sizus Maasi, colleague Felisadat Ogomoro.
Hafare, Tiro, and good afternoon, SNIO, Chairman Congressman John Paul Sablon, Honorable Members of SNIO. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you here today in support of House Local Bill 23-3 to appropriate $50,000 for Piala Conference. My name is Erlinda C. Naputi, and I am the Library Director for the Jotan Kizo Public Library and the President for Pacific Island Association of Library, Archives, and Museum, Piala. As the Piala President, this is the annual conference wherein all public libraries, museums, and archives come together to share network information. Team JKPO has always played a pivotal role in fostering literacy, providing access to information, promoting lifelong learning, and creating a sense of community. However, libraries face unprecedented challenges and opportunities in this rapidly evolving digital age. Professional development training equips us with the knowledge and skills necessary to adapt to changes in technologies, confidently navigate various information sources, deliver quality services, and promote learning and engagement in the community. Team JKPO will be presenting in a broad range of training topics, including but not limited to digital literacy and information technology skills, exploring JKPO's Pacific Cultural Corner Preservation and Conservation of Library Materials from the Pacific Broome, JKPO's Children of Our Homeland Center: Reading for Success, JKPO's Bookmobile Outreach Services Program: The Valve That Keeps JKPO Heartbeating, transforming teen services at the JKPO, and promoting library advocacy and administrative support. The 32nd Annual Piala Conference will establish pathways for our Pacific Island communities to learn, achieve, succeed, and share our unique island stories, best practices, and connections. The Piala Conference creates opportunities to engage with colleagues in the library, archives, and museum professions through educational discussions and presentations via resource sharing and collaboration. Regionally, the Jotan Kizo Public Library is the premier public library throughout Micronesia and the Maranas. Our conference theme this year is "Reevaluate, Refocus, Reconnect: Adapting to New Norms in the Pacific", which exemplifies our Piala mission to enhance the quality of leadership in order to support and strengthen libraries, archives, and museums across the Pacific Islands, the Northern Marana Islands, Guam, Hawaii Republic of the Marshall Islands, Republic of Palau, Federated States of Micronesia, Chuk, Yap, Kosciu, and Pompe, New Zealand, and American Samoa. Piala is a regional association committed to fostering awareness and encouraging cooperation and resource sharing among libraries, archives, museums, and related institutions of the Pacific Islands. In closing, I would like to share that the seeds of Piala were planted right here in Saipan 32 years ago. I am standing in front of you as the second person from Saipan to serve as the President of Piala. The other past president was the late CNMI Archivist Herbert Del Rosario. In 2017, I was voted in President, I was voted President of Piala in the island of Pompe, represented by only two voting delegates from the Northern Marana Islands out of the 110 voting members. In 2019, I was re-elected in Guam and won by a landslide to serve another term. I am humbled by the support I received from across Micronesia because they entrusted me with their confidence to lead this great organization into the 21st century. However, I cannot do it alone. I am standing in front of you today to humbly ask for your support of House Local Bill 23-3, which aims to appropriate $50,000 to JKPO for Piala Conference. As a JKPO is a stepping stone and the model library in which all Pacific libraries in our region look up to. It is my hope that the Jotan Kizo Public Library will be at the forefront of meaningful change when it comes to creating better communities and better libraries, not only in the Maranas, but in the entire Micronesia. As Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much." Sizus Maasi, Gilisso, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naputi. Podium is still open? Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Anthony Torres. Hafare, Tiro, Buenos, and good afternoon to everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the 23rd Northern Marianas Legislature, Chairman John Paul P. Sablon, and honored guests. I stand before you today as the Commissioner of Corrections, filled with enthusiasm and conviction to express my unwavering support for the House Local Bill 23-24. This pivotal legislation aims to allocate $60,000 to the Department of Corrections for the much-needed upgrade and rehabilitation of our new JDU, or what we would like to now call the Manhobin Care Center. The Manhobin Care Center plays a crucial role in our criminal justice system. It provides a safe and supportive environment for young offenders, guiding them towards rehabilitation and a positive future. However, the center is in dire need of substantial upgrades and rehabilitation due to limited resources and the wear and tear of time. House Local Bill 23-24 presents a golden opportunity for us to take action. By appropriating $60,000 to the Department of Corrections, we can address the presenting infrastructure needs within the Manhobin Care Center. The allocated funds will be dedicated to repairing plumbing, electrical systems, enhancing security measures, renovating living quarters, upgrading educational and recreational facilities, and acquiring necessary equipment for vocational training programs. These improvements are essential to creating an environment conducive to healing, growth, and successful reintegration. Investing in the upgrade and rehabilitation of the Manhobin Care Center is more than just a financial commitment. It is a testament to our commitment to the young individuals under our care and to the future of our society. By providing them with improved living conditions, quality education, and comprehensive rehabilitation programs, we empower them to break the cycle of violence and crime. The benefits of this legislation extend beyond the confines of the care center itself. By offering proper resources and support to our young offenders, we increase the likelihood of successful rehab- of successful rehabilitation, reduce recidivism rates, and ultimately create a safer community for all. The impact of the Manhobin Care Center extends far beyond its walls, echoing in the lives of families, neighborhoods, and our entire Commonwealth. I implore each and every one of the member of the 23rd Northern Marianas Legislature to consider the importance of this legislation. Your support for House Local Bill 23-24 will not only demonstrate your commitment to the well-being and reformation of young offenders, but also underscore our dedication to building a just and compassionate justice system. Together, we can lay the foundation for a brighter future by investing in the upgrade and rehabilitation of the Manhobin Care Center. We invest in the future of our young offenders, providing them with tools and opportunities they need to rebuild their lives. Chairman Sablon, esteemed members of the legislature, I urge you to support House Local Bill 23-24. Let us come together and make a difference in the lives of those who need it most. the Manhobin Care Center into a beacon of hope, ensuring a brighter tomorrow for our young individuals and a stronger Northern Marianas. Thank you, and may we move forward together in creating a more compassionate and just society. Don Kulun, Sizus Mossi, Gilisso. Thank you, and God bless our CNMI.
Thank you. Sizus Mossi, Commissioner Torres.
Good afternoon. Honorable members of the Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative Delegation, my name is Chris Heeb. I am an attorney at the Marianas Office of Micronesian Legal Services and have been for approximately the past 10 years. Present on behalf of MLSC as well is Mr. Robert Torres of our Board of Directors and Ms. Kristy Diaz, a paralegal with the Marianas Office. On behalf of MLSC, including our directing attorney in the Marianas Office, Jane Mack, who is off-island, and the executive director, Lee Plisco, and deputy director, Barbara Cepeda, who are also off-island in the FSM attending to MLSC business, we would like to express our support for House Local Bill 23-23 and for the inclusion of an appropriation to MLSC in that bill. The Marianas Office of Micronesian Legal Services assists low-income residents of the CNMI with a wide variety of civil legal issues. Most of those who we assist in the Marianas Office are in Saipan. The legal work we do is broad and diverse. We assist a lot of domestic violence victims in family law matters, helping to protect themselves and their children. We help families with adoptions and help families get legal guardianships over minor children who they are caring for. We assist single parents in establishing paternity and obtaining child support necessary for them to help financially support their children. We help the loved ones of disabled adults get guardianships so they can help to better care for their disabled loved ones. We help people keep their homes when they are threatened with foreclosure, and we help people who are facing wrongful evictions. We help victims of human trafficking. We help people do wills and deal with other property matters. We help people apply to become U.S. citizens and help U.S. citizens who are here to petition their non-U.S. citizen family members to stay here with them. We help people with simple things like general powers of attorney and affidavits that they need to handle affairs or to deal with some of our other government agencies. This is but a sample of the work that we do. Any help that we get to allow us to continue the work we do is very much appreciated and will help us to continue our work in assisting the low-income residents of our islands with their civil legal matters. I thank you, and I thank you for your consideration of MLSC in HLB 23-23. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hafare, Zan Tiro, Honorable Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative Delegation Chairman, John Paul Sablon, and the distinguished members, C. Francis Sablonzo,
Legislative delegation, humbly asking for the appropriation of an amount to repair the walkway that links our three separate offices that are there and also the pavilions. Over time, things do crack and there are safety issues that arise, not only for our staff members as they go around to each office, but also members of the general public, our clients and victims of crime, which our office is given the responsibility of advocating. And so with that, we ask for the support and approval of the Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative delegation. I never like to say Sennile, I just want to say the full name out of respect for the delegation and I hope that you will support our request and thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Tenorio and happy birthday on your day.
Thank you.
The podium is still open, please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman JP Sablan, honorable members of this august body. I'm here to throw my support for House Local Bill 2023. Before I continue, I do apologize, I forgot to state my name. Ray Yumo, I am the Secretary of the Department of Public Works. With me today is my Director of Roads and Grounds, Mr. Mike Borja. And we're here to support the funding of $20,000 for the Department of Public Works Fuel and Lub. We appreciate the fact that this body had considered us for funding. We accept any amounts, of course, $20,000 will help. It's not a lot, but we are extremely grateful. We do have a lot of activities. As you know, the department is tasked with maintaining all the major roadways shoulders in the Commonwealth and here on Saipan, which pertains to this delegation. It will assist in our fuel and lubrication needs. Very soon, we will have Route 36 open up paving for Route 36, which is the King Fisher Road going to Calabera Cave. It's a little short of that, but the paving is 100% complete as it stands. We are in the process of having a contractor stripe the road and it will soon be open to the public and we're very excited for that. But as we know, with a new road comes a new responsibility, which is to maintain the shoulder, so this funding will assist. On top of that, some of the members in this body have also asked for my department's assistance in opening up the Asgono and the Cagman convenience centers so that we can receive trash from the residents at large in those particular areas. And this fuel funding will help to transport the garbage and recyclables that will be collected to where it needs to go. So we are, I am contemplating for that. But as I know, the primary function is really to help the Division of Roads and Grounds. We do only have a limited amount of staff, about 15. We just lost one staffer, had a transfer, but we're making do and we really need your help here, so I'd like to thank everybody for that. Let me wear my other hat now. I'm also here on behalf of the Isanhalaum Laguna Anglers Association. I am a board member of this group. It's a very, very worthwhile group of anglers. The funding request is $10,000, that will go a long, long way. As you know, this group has an annual activity. We have Inside the Reef Fishing Derby and it's limited to boats of 17 feet and below. So it is a challenge to fish. We do have the Open Ocean Fishing Tournaments, but this one is unique because it's geared to smaller vessels and it's usually family oriented. It's always the parents and their children that are out there and also teams. And it's strictly a fishing tournament. Longlining, for example, talazing, netting is not allowed. So this helps to sustain the fish stocks, but at the same time have a fun time. We do get over 40 boats participating every year. So that tells a lot. It does help the economy because as you know, owning a boat costs maintenance. You're always going to be doing repairs and maintenance and it adds to the economic driver for the Commonwealth. So thank you for that as well. And lastly, although MRA is not funded here, I do hope this body can consider the Marianas Racing Association. I am also a member of this group and it's for off-road activities up in Marpey, the Cowtown area. And as residents, I know we do not want to hear dirt bikes and large or loud off-road vehicles running through our streets. We want them to go someplace and that place is Cowtown. And if there's any chance that money can be made available, I do appreciate that and the board as well. So I'd like to thank everybody's indulgence and I do apologize speaking on three, on behalf of three entities. But thank you for your time. This was.
Thank you, Secretary Yumo. Podiums still open, please proceed.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the legislative branch. I'm here today with my team who are waiting outside in the lobby. My name is Charlotte Flores and we represent the SAR program. Hafrey and Tiro, we are here to support House Local Bill 23-23 and we are in support of this bill because firstly, under the Office of the Governor, we are the lone residential program that operates 24/7. Secondly, our stakeholders rely on our program when they refer their clients to seek residential treatment at SAR. Third, we are all aware we have an ongoing drug epidemic problem in the Sino-MI. And this epidemic continues to worsen because we see not only parents, but our children having easy access to these substances. Our generation's lives are in danger because of this and we see the need to help these individuals. So at SAR, we help anyone who struggles with substance use. Let me paint a picture and go through our process at SAR. So we provide a safe and sober living environment while they seek treatment services and intense case management that coincides with their individual treatment plan. They reside at the center for four to six months, allowing them to take care of their lives and the lives of their family. When they have completed treatment, they then leave and reunite with their families and their children. If only you could see the transformation that happens inside SAR as they rebuild their lives is truly a miracle. Some of the challenge, so we have strong bones up at SAR because the job that we do is really a reward in itself. So the staff that are there today have been there since SAR opened. But it is hard to carry on our mission and goals without adequate funding and so we are in support of this bill. Furthermore, in order to house these individuals seeking help, we need, of course, adequate funding to ensure provisions such as food and other necessities. We purchase educational resources and curriculum. The challenges we face right now that we've been facing is that we are paying so much in non-potable water because SAR is in a location that has no direct piping for CUC to run. We need funding to make necessary repairs. That is crucial to continue running our program and to continue helping these individuals who have substance use disorder. So to the esteemed members of the Sennile Committee, we extend our heartfelt gratitude. Your consideration of our program for funding opportunities underscores your commitment to affecting meaningful change. By supporting SAR, you're not just enabling a program, you're fostering hope, rebuilding lives and shaping a safer and healthier community for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlotte Flores. The podium is still open. For anyone here in the gallery that wishes to make oral testimony, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Tiro Vaysho, in half a day. My name is Silva Nolpa Igisomar. I am your Director, Secretary of Department of Land and Natural Resources. I see you have a full agenda, so I'll try to be brief. I rise today in support of House Bill, House Local Bill 23-23. There are so many noble causes here that you are planning to allocate funding to and I support all of them with, as it relates directly or indirectly to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, I saw several that caught my eye, namely Cagman Agricultural Farms and Producers Association and the Saipan Agricultural Fair Association, the Tasi to Table and Isanhalaum Laguna Anglers Association. My support is in regards to the education of our youths and as they promote sustainable use of our resources. And at the same time, they showcase our natural resources, like the farmers, you know, they farm all year round. We got to support them. We have some concerns with food security and so all of these programs together, they will help sustain our community in the long run. And so supporting our fisher folks, our natural resource folks who want to till the land and be farmers and produce these types of crops, we should support these activities. So again, I rise today to support this House Local Bill and emphatically ask for your support as well to passing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Secretary Silva Nolpa Igisomar. The podium is still open for anyone here in the gallery that wishes to make oral testimony.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. Hafrey, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marlene Lumavi. I am a Board of Directors for the Northern Marianas Basketball Federation and on behalf of our federation, I am here to express our support for the House Bill 23-23. A little bit of a background on our federation. Our federation's goals is to successfully execute multiple programs aiming to grow the growth of the sport basketball. And on top of that is to represent the NMI internationally. To list a couple of goals we are running. One of them is a Her World Her Role program, which focuses mainly on younger girls who don't have an experience playing basketball and to help grow the love for the sport. And just last year, we successfully sent two, under 15 boys and girls to Guam to represent the NMI under the U-15 FIBA Championship. And that was a really successful experience because that was the first time the NMI sent a team down to represent under the U-15 FIBA Championship. And there's just a couple more things that, you know, our federation was able to do and one of them is I was fortunate enough to be sent down to Australia to be chosen as one of the two coaches who, out of the 19, to represent the NMI under a coaching program, which is really an amazing opportunity that the federation was able to provide. And last week, our President, James Lee, he went down to the Philippines on behalf of the NMI representing us out of the 198 nation. So just, those are just the little things of what our program, our federation is running. And, you know, we weren't, we're not able to do that without the financial support of, financial support. So just, I'm just really here to express that we do really want to support the House Bill 23-23.
Thank you, Ms. Marley.
Thank you.
The podium is still open for anyone here in the gallery that wishes to make oral testimony. Seeing that there is no further public comments, at this time, we move further down in our order of business and that is Item 9, Introduction of Local Bills. And at this time, I recognize Representative BJ Atto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Formally introducing House Local Bill Number 23-23 to appropriate, no, to reappropriate funds under Saipan Local Law 22-8 and for other purposes. And may I?
Please proceed.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Formally introducing House Local Bill Number 23-24 to appropriate $1,932,000 from revenues collected pursuant to Saipan Local Law 11-2 as amended and for other purposes introduced by myself and several others. And without any objection from the members and through our floor leader, Mr. Chairman, if we can place these two legislations for action on today's calendar.
No objections. Thank you, Representative Atto. With no objections from the members, at this time, I recognize the floor leader for the proper motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But before I offer the motion, I'd like to offer comments if there are no objections.
Is there objection? No objections, please proceed, Madam Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. House Local Bill 22-08 was a bill that I introduced in the 22nd House of Representatives and was passed actually in the 22nd to appropriate $1 million to our lone higher educational institution, the Northern Marianas College. It is unfortunate that the former Secretary of Finance, Mr. David Athalick, chose not to transfer those funds to NMC. And now, House Local Bill 23-23 attempts to reappropriate those funds to various organizations. And I just want to state for the record, I'm a strong advocate for an educated society here in the Marianas and I think the Sino-MI government has not exactly been supportive of having an educated society. Our economy shows that less than 17% of our community members have earned a bachelor's degree. Studies show that lack of education cuts down the chances of an individual to find good jobs and for our Commonwealth to experience economic prosperity. If we do not value a higher education, we will continue to run on a low-scaled economy. My dear colleagues, there is a direct correlation between the number of college degrees and the improvement of the state's workforce productivity. We should help prepare students to earn at least a two-year or a four-year degree, college degree. Only then will our Commonwealth and our community have a shot at breaking the seemingly never-ending cycle of poverty in our community that has been passed down from one generation to the next. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield. And I will now offer the motion to place House Local Bill 23-23 and 23-24 on today's calendar for action.
Thank you. There's a motion offered by the floor leader. Do I hear a second? And it's, it has been seconded. Discussion on that motion offered by the floor. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, members, that took care of Item D, Introduction of Local Bills. Moving further down on our order of business, there happens to be none on Item E, Introduction of Local Resolutions. We are now on Item F, Messages from the Governor. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have three, Governor's Communication 2317 to 2319.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Messages from the Governor. Thank you, members. Under Messages, Governor's Communication Number 23-17 to the reappointment of Mr. Joe Jose Bora Palacios to serve as a member of the Sino-MI Cannabis Commission, representing the 3rd Senatorial District. The Chair will respectfully ask the floor leader to effectuate her authority and refer this communication to the Committee on JGO. Moving along, we are now on Item G, Messages from the Mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one, Mayor's Communication 2307, commenting on House Local Bills 23-23 and 23-24.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Messages from Mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, there happens to be none on Item H, Reports on Communications from Heads and Departments and Agencies. We are now on Item I, House Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have two. Mr. Chairman, we have four, House Communications 23-26 to 23-29.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on House Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now Item J, Senate Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have two Senate Communications, 2305 and 2306.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Senate Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on Item K, Delegation Matters. Madam Clerk.
We have five, Mr. Chairman. Delegation Matters Number 2348 to 2352.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Delegation Matters. Ready? Thank you, members. We are now on Item L, Miscellaneous Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have nine. Miscellaneous Communication Number 2342 to 2350.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Miscellaneous Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along in our order of business, there happens to be none on Item M, Reports on Standing Committees. None on Item N, Reports on Special and Conference Committees. None on Item O, Unfinished Business. None on Item P, Resolution Calendar. We are now on Item Q, Bill Calendar. And at this time, I recognize the floor leader for the proper motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. In order to act on the two bills, I will offer a motion to suspend pertinent rules so we can act on these bills today. Pertinent rules, specifically the production of a committee report and other pertinent rules.
Thank you, floor leader. There is a motion offered by our floor leader and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. I offer a motion to pass House Local Bill Number 23-23 to appropriate funds under Saipan Local Law 22-08 for and for other purposes introduced by Representative John Bloss Jonathan Atto and 14 others. So moved.
There is a motion offered by our floor leaders for the passage of House Local Bill 23-23. It has been seconded. Discussion on that motion. Recognize the author, Representative Bloss Jonathan Atto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a floor amendment to present, but before I present that floor amendment, I would like to first thank our current floor leader of the delegation. As a member of the House during the 22nd legislature, she introduced a $2 million appropriation that would fund $1 million to the hospital and the other $1 million to NMC to address the road issue regarding the property NMC that can most move forward with the project to build a brand-new NMC for the people of the Sino-MI, most specifically to, for the people in the island of Saipan. She championed that, we supported it. Unfortunately, those monies never made it to NMC. We had a meeting with NMC earlier this year. That was one of the biggest issue that they can never, they couldn't move up, move on with the project and the groundbreaking for the new NMC campus. Therefore, during that meeting, we presented another funding source that was liquid cash, it can get the money to NMC, they can move forward, i.e. what is now Saipan Local Law 23-2. And after 23-2 was signed into law, the funding source allowed NMC to proceed with the project. Therefore, NMC was able to do the groundbreaking that we were all present to see and we're very excited for the new campus to start the process in getting that campus up. So that being said, I want to make sure that the people recognize that the floor leader was the initial person that had introduced legislation to fund that project. Again, unfortunately, those monies never made it and one of the things that we brought up with NMC to make sure that they didn't have to go through the headache of looking for that money or finding, contacting finance to get the money to them, that would give them a different source and that the legislature be the ones to worry in addressing the funding source regarding 23, what was 23-8 or 22-8? It's now 23-23. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I offer a floor amendment on page 5, line 19 and section 4. The section for reporting of expenditures. It shall read now, expenditure authorities of the funds allocated under section 2 of this act shall be responsible to report all expenses and provide all supporting documents to include, but not limited to receipts and invoices to the Secretary of the Department of Finance and the Chairperson of Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative Delegation by the end of the 2023 calendar year. Provided further, that failure to provide all expenses, entities that were afforded funds under this act shall not be able to avail to any future funds appropriated by Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative Delegation. And with that being said though, Mr. Chairman, I know that the 23 calendar year is coming up. I think that we can, we can hope, be hopeful that the money is readily available so these monies can be drawn down. And should that not be available for a drawdown in totality for the end of the fiscal year, that we can give entities the opportunity to provide the necessary documents to the delegation and Secretary of Finance when they do get the monies. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There is a floor amendment offered by the author of the House Local Bill 23-23 and it has been seconded. Discussion on that floor amendment. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. House Local Bill 23-23 is now Draft 1. We are now on the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? Ready? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Representative Fadon?
Yes.
Representative Atto?
Yes.
Representative Bobota?
Yes.
Representative Benaventi?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Senti?
Yes.
Representative Castro? Senator Delion Guerrero?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marisa?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Hungan.
Representative Manglonia?
Yes.
Representative Omar?
Hungan.
Representative Probs?
Yes.
Representative Villagomias?
Yes.
Representative Yang Tamai?
Owen.
Mr. Chairman?
Hungan.
Mr. Chairman, all 18 members voted yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all 18 members present, voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill 23-23, Draft 1 hereby passes the delegation. Thank you. Recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill Number 2324 to appropriate $1,932,000 from revenues collected pursuant to Saipan Local Law 11-2 as amended and for other purposes, introduced by Representative Bloss Jonathan Atto and 15 others. So moved.
There is a motion for the passage of House Local Bill 23-24 and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Recognize the author, Representative Bloss. Recognize the author, Representative Blas Jonathan Atto.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you floor leader for the motion to pass House Local Bill 23-24. This floor amendment coincides with the letter that was sent here by the Attorney General so that they can, so that the money is used specifically to the cost that they are requesting for rather than for its operation. So, on page line 15, section 2B4, shall read now as $50,000 for the Attorney General's Office to pay for improvements at the Criminal Division Office at the Civic Center in Susupi specifically to improve and make safe the common walkways and pavilions linking the offices from the Criminal Division and for painting expenses. Funds allocated to Attorney General's Office shall not be used for personal operation expenses. The expenditure authority shall be the Attorney General or his or her designee. Furthermore, under page 3, line 15, we shall insert after the word finance and the chairperson of the Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative delegation. Furthermore, under line 20, a new section 6 is hereby added to read as follows. And the remaining section shall be renumbered accordingly. So the new section 6 would be fiscal year. The funds allocated under this section shall be without fiscal year limitations. Consistent with the intent of the foregoing amendment, I hereby also move to allow the legal counsel together with the House clerk or the SNIL clerk to make further non-substantive technical amendments that are strictly necessary to effectuate the intent of this amendment. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, members. There is a floor amendment offered by the author, BJ Atto, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the floor amendment? Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Floor amendment adopted. House Local Bill 23-24 now is in a form of draft one. We are now on the main motion. Discussion on the main motion. Ready? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Representative Faudon?
Yes.
Representative Atto?
Yes.
Representative Senator Bobota?
Yes.
Representative Benaventi?
I'm ready.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Okay.
Representative Camacho Senti?
Yes.
Representative Castro? Senator Delion Guerrero?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marisa?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Representative Manglonia?
Yes.
Representative Omar?
Hungan.
Representative Probs?
Yes.
Representative Vilagomis?
Howard.
Representative Yang Tamai?
Howard.
Mr. Chairman?
Hungan.
Mr. Chairman, all 18 members voted yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all 18 members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill Number 23-24, draft one, hereby passes the delegation. Thank you, members. That took care of item Q, bill calendar. We are now moving further down in our order of business. Item I, our miscellaneous business. Are there any miscellaneous business? Recognize Representative Marisa Flores.
Thank you, Chair. And at this time, I'd like to, you know, offer my disappointment in regard to floor leader sentiment that, you know, she, during her tenure as the 22nd House of Representatives, that her appropriation was not provided and given to NMC when it should have been done so by the previous Secretary of Finance. My hope is that this behavior does not occur and that whatever monies are appropriated under this committee will be forwarded as such when we vote and pass. I would also like to thank the members of the SNIL for being proactive. Obviously, that $1 million came up and here we are. And we've appropriated to agencies and other institutions. But I must stress that I think we all share the same sentiment as floor leader, that we would all like to do our part in eradicating poverty and supporting education, be it kindergarten through post-secondary, whether it be technical trade or through NMC. So I'd just like to clarify and make it known to the general public that we do all care about education and we do all care about eradicating poverty. And it is everybody's business. And I do believe that "E-A-M" is spelled with E-A-M instead of T-I-M. So, thank you, Chair. I yield.
Thank you, Representative Marisa Flores. Are there any other miscellaneous business? Ready? Thank you. Moving along, we are now on item S, announcement. Are there any announcements? Ready? Thank you. We move to our last order of business, which is item T, adjournment. And at this time, I recognize the floor leader for the proper motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. I move to adjourn today's session subject to the call of the Chair.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader for adjournment and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion? Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. We are now adjourned. Thank you, members.